Good afternoon. This is the Hingham Select Board. It is November 30, 2021. The time is 5:02 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board to order. And we will begin by asking Bill Ramsey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome everyone to this in-person meeting. It is a rare privilege and an odd experience as we're all masked following COVID protocols. The first item on our agenda is to consider approval of the minutes of November 2 and November 4 of 2021. I am prepared to move on those. Bill, are you?
I am.
And Liz?
I am.
Then I will accept the motion on the November 2 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 2, 2021.
Second.
We now do a vote. Now here, we don't even have to do a roll call, but we can do just raising our hands. It used to be. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. It's approved. I'll accept the motion on the November 4 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 4, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Next item on our agenda, and a very important item on our agenda, are the police officer candidate interviews. I'm just going to begin before we bring the officers in, just to note to the public that this is a responsibility that this board undertakes as the police commissioner. And this is not common throughout the United States. Hingham is very fortunate in the way we've got the system set up. There is direct accountability of the Police Department directly to this board and this board to the public. And members of the public appreciate this, the process, and know that their views are being reflected in our views as we do the interview. So with that, I'd like to ask our police chief to come up. And Chief Jones, we are following the COVID protocols. In this case, there is sufficient distance between us that I'd ask you to unmask as you address the board.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll just walk through the process that's brought us here tonight with the candidates. So the Hingham Police Department began the process of filling two open police officer vacancies in mid-September by requesting a list of eligible candidates from civil service. Civil service requires that the selections are made from a list of provided candidates using the formula of two times the number of vacancies plus one for the group. So for our two vacancies, that means you're considering the top five candidates. The first step in the process is that the candidates are assigned a background investigator, either a Hingham police detective or a detective from a neighboring agency. The background investigation consists of an in-depth intake interview and review of the candidate's application. This is followed up with interviews with employers, neighbors, references, and a review of submitted materials such as credit reports, driving records, military documents, and college transcripts. A full background investigation takes approximately one month from start to finish. The next step in the process is a police panel interview with supervisors, adjutants, and lieutenants from the Hingham and Sitewatt Police Departments. The panel followed the strict interview guidelines and reading criteria set forth by the California Commission on Police Officer Standards and Training, with whom we have assigned agreement to use their process and question banks. The candidates are interviewed for approximately 45 minutes and rated on the following six factors of experience, problem-solving, communication skills, interest and motivation, interpersonal skills, and community involvement and awareness. The next step is the interview with the Hingham Select Board, which is why they're all here this evening. After the interviews and subsequent appointment by the board, the two individuals who receive a conditional offer of employment will be sent to the police academy, which we're currently expecting to be the MBTA Police Academy in Quincy, which will begin in late January or early February of this coming year. The then recruits will be projected to graduate in July or August and then begin a three-month field training program. And pending a successful completion, they'd be ready to be on their own and on the road by November of next year. As you can see, there's a lengthy process to get a new officer trained. And on our shift, I look forward to hearing from our five candidates this evening.
Chief, is there a particular order that we're going to be seeing these candidates? There is an order listed in the agenda with Ryan first. I just don't know if it's your expectation. Maybe Tom, you can answer in terms of the order that we'll be speaking to them.
So it'll be alphabetical, which is the same way that we did their police panel interviews.
Okay.
Alphabetical by last name.
That's the order we have.
Yep, that is the order we have. I see there are two other representatives of the Police Department in the room right now with either... Actually, I'd like them both just to introduce themselves and if either one has something to add, not that they need to, but just that this is an opportunity.
Sure. Good evening, Chief Ryan Finney, Police Department. Thank you for the presence.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lieutenant John Markl. Thank you, gentlemen.
I will ask my fellow Select Board members any other questions for the assembled officers here before we bring in the candidates.
None. Appreciate you guys being here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for outlining the process.
Okay. The first candidate, how do you pronounce his last name?
Akili.
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 So we're not going to shake hands. Are you going to give this one's good call? Or are we going to give it to the other?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Right, so Ryan, please have a seat. And we have sufficient space between us that I'd ask you to take off your mask as we speak. And up here, I would ask each Select Board member at the time that they address the candidate to take off their mask so he can clearly hear us. And there's good communication. So with that, Ryan, thank you. And how do you pronounce your last name?
It's pronounced Akili.
So thank you for being here. The department, I know, has an excellent record of attracting candidates, and the fact that you're before us here speaks well of you. And before we ask questions, I'd just like to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself. We do have your resume. We've seen it before. You just presented it now. But if there's anything you wanted to highlight, any comments you want to make, please do so. And at the end of this, I'll give you another opportunity to make any additional comments. So please, the floor is yours.
I'm Ryan Akili. I've lived in Hingham my entire life. I went to Severian Brothers High School in Westwood, Massachusetts. I attended Merrimack College before I transferred to Quincy College. I do online classes right now, and I plan on finishing up my degree at Bridgewater State University. I enjoy hunting, fishing, hanging out with my friends and family.
So Liz, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. Thank you, Ryan, for being here and applying. What quality do you think is most important for a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation when you employed that quality?
I believe a good quality for a police officer is hardworking, dedicated, having integrity, and being honest. An example of me being hardworking would be when I go to work, when I'm at college doing projects, group projects, working with other people, doing fundraisers with my parents, doing fundraisers for like my little brother when he had cancer.
Excellent, thank you.
I was going to suggest that each of us do two questions, and then if we want, we can do a third question.
Okay.
Give it to you next.
Okay. What skills do you have that you think will benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
I'm very hardworking. I'm very motivated. I'm very honest, and I'm very dedicated to everything that I put my mind to, especially law enforcement work. I've been surrounded around it my entire life, and it's something that has kind of rubbed off on me from my father.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
Great. All right, thanks for being here tonight. What kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work?
Good communication. Communication is key when it comes to community policing and also being very caring and understanding of the community that they work for. So being able to communicate with people who may have disabilities, different races, religions, things like that, those are great ways to connect to the community. Also giving back through events such as like the Citizens Police Academy, which I did in 2017, Family Fun Day, those are great ways to connect the community with law enforcement.
And you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country. Why do you want to be a Hingham police officer?
I've lived in Hingham my entire life. I feel like I have a very good connection with the town, especially through my father. My dad has worked here for 20 years now, so I believe that that is one of the main reasons why I want to work in the town of Hingham.
Great, thank you.
So Ryan, the correct answer to Bill's question is the food is really good in Hingham. That's why you want to be here. I want to pick up on your comment about communications and how important that is. Because I agree, a critical aspect of this job that you're applying for is to be able to communicate effectively. And what I'd like to ask you is to rate your communication skills, and what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
Let's say my communication skills, not perfect. I'd say maybe a nine, honest rating. Just working, I've worked multiple different jobs. I've worked at Linden Ponds my sophomore year of high school, so I learned how to communicate with older people who have diseases that come along later in life. I've worked with, at college, with people of different religions, different races. Especially at high school, there were a lot of Muslim kids at Severian for a Catholic school. But just being able to learn how they talk, how, understand how they like to be talked to, and just overall being polite to them and understanding of, you know, certain aspects of their life.
How are you dealing with stressful situations? And can you give me an example of how you've had to deal with a stressful situation other than this interview?
I'm very good at dealing with stressful situations. A couple of years back, me, my mother, and my two younger brothers were driving on the highway in the winter, and a sheet of ice came off the top of like a box truck, and it came up and smashed the front windshield of the car. And if that windshield were to have caved in, we definitely would have been crushed by it. It was a huge piece of ice. My mother was freaking out. My two brothers were crying in the backseat. And during that situation, I had to try to help my mom, be like, we need to pull over, like, this isn't good. And also try to calm down my two younger brothers in the backseat who were having an absolute panic attack about it.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, did you want to have another question?
No other questions, thank you. You have a very impressive resume.
Thank you.
Bill?
No, my third question was kind of answered by the other question, so good.
So this is your chance to ask us any questions you might have about the department, about the town, or give us any other closing comments or statements you'd like to make.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for allowing me to sit here and speak to all of you today. It means a lot to me, and I've enjoyed this whole entire process from start to finish.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hear you. Ashley, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we are going to follow COVID protocols. There's sufficient distance between you and us and you and everyone else that you are invited to remove your mask.
Thank you.
And as each of us asks questions, we in turn will be removing our masks. So thank you, we really appreciate your coming here. Before we ask questions, I'd like to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself, make any comments, and then we'll ask our questions.
All right. My name's Ashley. I'm 23, and I've been living in Hingham for around 11-ish years. Went to Hingham High School and Middle School. Yeah, I went to school and I graduated in May of 2020, so yeah.
Great. So this time, I'm going to start, Bill, with you.
Ashley, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
What kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work?
So I think law enforcement officers need a lot of communication, and they need patience, and I think they need to be able to work together and work with a variety of different people, because that's what you see out in the community, so.
And my second question for you is, you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country. So why do you want to be a Hingham police officer?
So living in Hingham for so long and just growing up in the community, I saw how close the police work with the community and doing different things like the Citizens Police Academy and RAD. And I was actually a member of the RAD at Hingham High School, so just working with the officers, I think it's great. It'll be a great experience. Thank you.
Liz?
Excellent. Thank you for being here, Ashley. What quality do you think is most important for a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation when you employ that quality?
I'm sorry. Sorry, do you want me to repeat it? Did you repeat? Thank you. I think that working with a variety of different people is a very important quality. And in my line of work, I'm a behavioral therapist right now, so you work with many different people that, and you develop many different skills. That's very important, so.
Yes, I saw that in your resume. That's certainly an impressive field that you're in.
Thank you.
And I think lends itself to community policing, so I'm glad to see that. What skills that you have do you think will benefit the Hingham Police Department?
I think being patient and working well with others and just communication, I think, is key to being successful in this field of work.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
In my view, a critical aspect of this job is communication and communication skills. How would you rate your communication skills, and what have you done to improve them?
Yeah, so I think I have pretty good communication skills. Like I said, working, in my line of work, you work with a variety of different people. So I have taken classes in college. I had to take a couple of communication classes, so I think those definitely helped me work on my communication skills.
And can you share with us how you deal with stressful situations? And if you can give a specific example of how you've had to deal with some stressful situations?
Yeah, so you have to, definitely staying calm is key and having the patience to deal with that stressful situation. Like I said, with my line of work, I've dealt with many different situations that are probably very stressful, but just staying calm and composed, I think, has really helped me get through those situations.
But can you give me a specific example?
Yes, sorry. Let me think. I would say, sorry, like, some of my things that I've dealt with, I'm not really allowed to say.
Right.
So sorry, like, sorry. But yeah, just with children, maybe getting upset over something and having to stay calm and work through that situation without getting too, like, worked up or overwhelmed and dealing with that situation, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, did you have any follow-up questions?
No, no other questions, thank you.
Liz?
No other questions, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
So Ashley, this is your chance, if you'd like to ask us any questions about the town, about the department, or just make any closing comments, the floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you so much for your time tonight, and I really appreciate it. So thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
(laughing). Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. Ryan, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. So we are following COVID protocols here. There is sufficient distance that I will invite you to take off your mask.
Thank you.
So that we can hear you clearly, and as each of us ask our questions, we will also take off our mask.
Thank you.
Before we begin, this is an opportunity, if you'd like to share something about yourself with us, we have your resume, we've got the, you know, the documents that have been submitted, anything you wanted to highlight, just any introduction, this is a chance, and then we'll ask questions.
Great, thank you. I'll just start off, my name's Ryan Finney. I grew up here in Hingham, Massachusetts. I attended East Elementary School, Hingham Middle School, and Hingham High School. In Hingham High School, I spent time in athletics. I played for the symphony in the orchestra. I played the cello since fifth grade. As well as my senior year, was the team captain for our high school football team, and also the president of the criminal justice here, working directly with our school resource officer, Officer Tom Ford. After that, I went and I played Division One football as a student athlete at the University of New Hampshire, where I played tight end. I have my mother and my father, Son Finney, Peter Finney, both live here in Hingham, Massachusetts. I got an older sister, Margaret Finney, little brother, Cole Finney, another little brother, Nathan Finney. Cole plays tight end for Duke University, and little brother's a junior at Hingham High School.
Great, thank you. Liz?
Excellent, thank you, Ryan, for being here.
Thank you.
I'll get used to it. 20 months in, okay. Sorry, no, thank you, Ryan, for being here.
Thank you.
What quality do you think is most important for a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation when you employed this quality?
I would say honesty. Honesty, integrity, together, they kind of combine a little together. Just being that, as you're working with the public, you're working with people all the time, your honesty, your ability to do the right thing when no one's looking, do what you're supposed to do, act in a mature manner, and handle, treat everybody the same. You have to be able to carry that quality, or if you lose that, people can't trust you to do what you're supposed to do, then that reflects on you and the department as a whole, more importantly. That has been instilled in me since a young age with my parents. My dad, with his time in the military, that was definitely put on me. Just growing up, telling the truth, the big phrase he was doing was, just whatever you do, pretend your mom's there. That's what you do.
That's good advice.[1443.13][1443.13](laughing). Excellent, excellent, thank you. Related to that question, what skills do you have that you think will benefit the Hingham Police Department?
I would start with my work ethic, my communication skills, my people skills, along with leadership. Again, reflecting back on my dad's time that he spent in the military, that he retired as captain, that was something that was instilled to me. And then becoming captain of the football team my senior year in high school, I learned that. I was elected by my peers, so that was a big honor. And then getting to college, the work ethic, the dedication as a student athlete at a big program, you learn, you learn that really quickly throughout your days, to be able to commit to something, sacrifice things that other people that you might want to be doing, but you can't because you're committed to something else.
Right, excellent.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ramsey.
Great. Ryan, thanks for being here tonight.
No, thank you.
What kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work?
Well, the first one, kind of reflecting back, honesty, definitely. And the second one, your presence, your communication, getting out in the public, making sure the public sees your face. They see that you're out there, you're working with the people. And then just on a day-to-day basis, are you doing the right thing in and out? Are you treating people with empathy? Are you understanding people's situations as they might be different than yours? Because at the end of the day, you might see something differently than someone else. You have to understand that everyone's going to see something in a different manner than you.
And you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country. You could have stayed in New Hampshire, could have worked up there if you wanted to, but obviously you came back to Hingham. And why do you want to be a Hingham police officer?
The biggest, this is where I grew up. This is where my friends are, this is where my family lives. I can't think of a bigger honor, something to give back to the people that have made me who I am, my friends, the people who live here, the education. I couldn't think of a better way to give back to a community than to work where I grew up.
Great, thank you.
So Ryan, when Liz Klein asked you about the skills you bring to the department, I thought you were going to say your cello playing skills. I have been in orchestras. I have not met a cello player who is also a football player.
That was one I wrote my college essay on.[1612.32][1612.32](laughing).
So congratulations.
Thank you.
In my view, a critical aspect of this job is communication skills.
Yes, sir.
And what I'd like you to do for me is rate your communication skills. How good do you think you are, and what have you done to improve those skills?
On a 10 scale, I'm assuming I would say an A out of 10, just as, because I know there's always room for improvement and everything. That would be the first thing. But choosing A out of 10 as, because there's room to improve, but I would say I have a strong set of communication skills. Through college, I sat in different seminars and the classes that I took that allow work presentation-based, I know I'm finishing up right now. I finished college in about three weeks, actually. The two capstone classes where I went out to present a project to a client that we've been working on for the last three months. So you learn, over the last three, four years, I've learned that skill, presenting in front of professors, my classmates. And then in high school, the football team, leading them, that's a big part, make sure you're getting your message across in an appropriate fashion.
Great. So you may have partially answered this question, but I'm going to ask you directly. How are you, how are you at dealing with stressful situations? Can you give me a specific example of how you've had to deal with a stressful situation?
I would say, I would say nine out of 10, and I would reflect back on my student athletics, football in college. A lot of times, on game day on Saturday, you're playing in front of 5, 10, 15,000 people, sometimes a big homecoming game, 20,000 people. When you step out on that field, and you gotta be able to go silent in your head, and that comes back to training. Similar here, if you're out on the force, you have a hefty load of training that you rely on. That's kind of similar to that during the week. There's nobody, no one's watching you, you're doing your own thing, practicing. Fans aren't there, nobody's there. That's when you're doing the repetitions, you're watching film, you're getting trainings when you step out there, and it's actually happening, that's supposed to be the easy part.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Liz, any follow-up questions?
No other questions, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you so much.
Just out of curiosity, Ryan, so you're going to graduate in a month?
I expect December 13th in about three weeks.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Did you play, did you just finish football season this fall?
I did. Passed during the COVID. My last senior season actually got canceled, so we haven't moved on. But we're moving on to bigger and better things.
Well, congratulations on your upcoming graduation.
Thank you.
So Ryan, this is a chance, if you'd like to ask us any questions about the town, about the department, or if you want to give any closing comments.
Just closing comments, it's, since I'm a young kid, this is something I wanted to do, and it's kind of, it's crazy that I'm sitting here right now, so I just want to say it's an honor to be sitting here, and I'm very appreciative, thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you for coming.
Good night.
You too, thank you.
So, we are following COVID protocols here, there is sufficient distance between you and me, and the rest of the group, that I'd invite you to take off your mask, so that we can hear you clearly, and as we ask questions, we in turn will be removing our masks. But before we begin questioning, this is an opportunity for you to introduce yourself, we have the information, but if there's anything you want to highlight, please just give us a brief introduction.
My name's Hugh Healy, I was born in Boston, Massachusetts, I grew up in Marshfield, Massachusetts, and graduated high school in 2014 from Archbishop Williams High School. Immediately following that, I enlisted in the United States Army as a combat engineer. I served for over five years as a combat engineer, leaving the service as a staff sergeant. I served at multiple assignments throughout the United States, and completed multiple overseas assignments as well. Following that, I currently serve as a Federal Reserve Police Officer, NEMT, at the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston for about the past two years.
Great, thank you. Bill Ramsey?
Great. Hugh, thank you for coming in tonight, and thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
A couple of questions, so when you said you were overseas, were you in combat, or?
No, sir, I served in Korea, Europe, several countries, Poland, Germany, and Bulgaria, and then I briefly served in China.
Well, thank you, thank you for your service again.
Thank you.
You know, you have enlisted here Federal Reserve Law Enforcement Officer, is that affiliated with the Federal Protective Service, or is it a branch of it, or?
No, sir, it's authorized by the Federal Reserve Act, it's its own entity.
So, it's specific to the Federal Reserve?
Yes, sir.
Got it, all right. I have two questions for you, first one.
Before you begin, you just might want to share your military background, so he knows.
Yeah, so I'm a Lieutenant Colonel in the Army Reserve as well, so is Art as well, so.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for saying that. What kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work?
I think law enforcement officers need to have people skills, and they need to understand different cultures, in terms of, everybody's coming from a different place, and some people might do things that we don't really understand, or we find kind of strange, but to them, that's their cultural norm, and just kind of understanding other people, and understanding the way they live their lifestyle, in order to effectively communicate with the entire community.
And you could certainly apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country, why do you want to be a Hingham police officer?
This is a community that I moved to when I left the military, I've been here for about two years now, I've really grown to like the community, the neighbors that I live with, and I think it'd be an honor to be able to serve that community.
Great, thank you.
Liz Klein?
Hi, Hugh, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
What quality do you think is most important for a police officer, and can you give an example of a situation when you employ that quality?
I think it's most important for a police officer to be honest, specifically being in a position of public trust, where you have that authority bestowed upon you to effect arrests, or, you know, respond to calls, and service the community. For myself, I think just day in, day out, just being honest on the job, and, you know, always being true when you're writing your reports, or giving a statement.
Excellent, great, and which skills that you have do you think will benefit the Hingham Police Department?
I think I'm a versatile individual, I've served in the military for a while, I know things can change rapidly, and you have to adjust to that, and working in policing as well, it's similar, you have to adjust on the fly, and use your training for that, and I think being a versatile individual really helps you respond to the different types of calls, and different types of issues within the community.
Great, thank you.
It's so nice to take this off, and be able to ask you questions without it on. A critical aspect of the job you're applying for is effective communication, good communication skills, and I'd like to ask you to rate your own communication skills, and what have you done to improve those skills?
I think I'm an effective communicator, I think we can always work on different facets, especially communication, and the different levels that there are within policing, whether that be communicating on the radio with your colleagues, or communicating with members of the community, or communicating with other members of the department. For myself, just working on that, just speaking with different people that you wouldn't typically go out and speak to, and kind of just understanding where different people are coming from.
Great. Let me ask you, how are you at dealing in stressful situations, and can you give me a specific example of how you've had to deal with a stressful situation?
I think I'm effective at dealing with stressful situations, through my military training, and also law enforcement training, it's kind of bestowed into you that you're going to find yourself in stressful situations, and you need to take a second to relax, calm down, and then effectively respond to that situation, rather than just rapidly doing it without thinking, and an example of that, I would say, I was flagged down a few weeks ago to, or a couple months ago, to an assault and battery witnessed by a bystander, came, flagged me down at cell station, so I immediately assessed the scene, and then, rather than just going over there, running after the suspect, actually calling for backup, securing the scene, separating the victim, making sure they're safe, and then actually going and effectively detaining the suspect.
Great, thank you. Bill, you have any follow-up questions?
Nothing to follow up on, thank you.
And Liz?
No other questions, thank you.
So, Hugh, this is your chance, if you have any questions of us, about the town, about the police department, or any closing comments you'd like to make.
I'd just like to thank everybody for their time and the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? So, we are following COVID protocols here, there's sufficient distance between you and this group, and the rest of the assembled, so you should take off your mask, and we will in turn be unmasking as we ask you questions. But I'd like to begin by giving you the opportunity to introduce yourself, we have the resume that you've submitted, if there's anything you wanted to highlight, this is a chance to do so.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Select Board, my name is Tim Moriarty, I was born and raised in the town of Hingham, I graduated from Hingham High School in 2018, upon completion of high school, I took a path that many other Hingham High School graduates don't take, and I enlisted in the Marine Corps as an O311 infantry rifleman. After my initial training in boot camp, I checked into my unit, and I was informed that would be deploying, and our mission would be to train foreign forces in Asia, so we specifically trained Korean forces and Japanese forces. After my deployment, I returned home here, to the town of Hingham, and I applied to become a dispatcher in the town of West Bridgewater, where I currently work as a dispatcher, and I've been given great insight into the world of policing through my employment, and I am also currently a full-time student at Bridgewater State University for criminal justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you've been busy, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Liz?
Yes, Tim, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. What quality do you think is most important for a police officer, and can you give us an example of a situation when you employed this quality?
I think a police officer needs to be an individual that is able to be, is able to adapt to a situation. A police officer at one moment could be writing someone a traffic citation, and then the next moment be fighting for their life, they could also be helping an individual cross the street, an elderly individual, and then the next morning, the next call they're presented with could be a very violent situation, so a police officer needs to be someone that's very adaptable, and able to overcome any situation, no matter what it is, they need to be an individual that is able to wear many different hats, and adapt to whatever situation they're placed in.
Yes, definitely. What skills, which skills that you have do you think will benefit the Hingham Police Department?
Through my experience in the military, and experience in my current job, I've obtained various different skills, I believe my communication skills are very strong, although I might sound a little bit nervous right now.
No, come on.
That's all right.
But I've, in my current position, I'm a solo dispatcher, so for the whole town, I'm the only dispatcher on my given shift, so I answer every 911 call, and every business call, in addition to interacting with the public who walks into the police station. So I need to be able to multitask in order to keep the officers on the road safe, but also reassure callers that are often hysterical, and going through some of the worst days of their life, so I need to be, attribute that I see in myself, is that I'm a good multitasker, and my communication skills are on point, because they need to be.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Ramsey?
Tim, good to see you again, thanks for your service. And how many years you do on active duty?
I was on two years for active duty, first year in my initial training, I've always been a reservist, but in my first year of my contract, my unit was activated, so we spent over a year on active duty.
So you were two years active duty, and then you did a third year on active duty as a mobilized reservist?
No, just two, it was a little bit over two years on active duty, not by choice, just because my unit was activated.
Okay, understood, yeah, and you're still in the reserves now?
Yes, sir, I have about four more years left in my contract.
Outstanding, great, excellent, I know you're doing some great stuff in the Marine Corps, so that's great to hear that.
Thank you, sir.
My first question for you is, what kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work?
In order to make, a law enforcement officer who wants to partake in community policing, and make it something that works, is they need to get on the same level as those in the community, they need to stop their cruiser from driving, get out, and get out and talk to people, talk to business owners, and just children playing in the street, and try to connect with those people, and show the community that police officers, although they are often perceived as scary individuals, or people that can haul you off to jail, that they're just normal people, just like you and I on the street, so, yes, sir.
Great, and you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country, why do you want to be a Hingham police officer?
I would like to be a Hingham police officer, because this is the town that I know and love, I played multiple sports here, so I have a lot of esprit de corps in the town, and I appreciate many members of the community, also, this is where my family lives, and so I'd like to serve and protect my family, also my friends, and people that I know in this community, so the town means a lot to me, and I could not see myself as a police officer anywhere else.
Yeah, you were across Colley, right?
Yes, sir.
I remember that, okay, great, well, thank you, Tim, appreciate it.
So, Tim, you've mentioned a couple times communication skills, and I agree, it's a critical aspect of the job that you're applying for, how would you rate your communication skills, and what have you done to improve those skills?
I would say that my communication skills are very strong, but there's always room for improvement, I've been put in various situations where I've had to communicate effectively, and through those situations, I've learned that there's always room for improvement, and every situation has its own challenges, I've been in very wild situations, where I had to try to figure out where someone was who had an emergency, but they did not know where they were, and there was, it was a very violent situation, and I also had to talk to them on the phone, and try to figure out where they are, while updating via radio the officers who were coming, so I had to listen while also being able to communicate effectively, so that's one aspect of my job that I enjoy very much, is it develops my communication skills daily, whether I'm just talking to a citizen face-to-face, or I'm talking to someone who's hysterical on the phone, both of those improve my communication skills greatly.
Great, and I think you've really touched on the next topic that I was going to raise, which is, how are you at dealing with stressful situations, and I'd just ask you to give me a specific example of how you've had to deal with a stressful situation.
So, when I answer a 911 call, the phone rings, and I never really know what's going to be on the other end, it could be a person wondering if the dump or the transfer station is open that day, or it could be someone who I have to instruct on how to give CPR to their loved one. A situation that I previously mentioned is, I took a 911 call from a domestic violence coordinator, and they stated that their patient, or their, the individual that they counsel, their abuser was present, but they only knew that the situation was occurring at an address that began with the number 700, so I had to start actually Googling different types of buildings that people may work, that begin with the number 700 in the town, because there's multiple different streets that have the number 700, but then I also had to reassure her that help would be on the way, and it ended up that the suspect in this matter was wanted for a murder or homicide out of the city of Boston, so I found that out while the officers were on the scene, or headed to the scene, so I had to effectively communicate with them, and tell them potential hazards that they could face once they arrived on the scene.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Liz, do you have any follow-up questions?
No other questions, thank you.
Bill?
No other questions.
So, Tim, this is a chance, if you have any questions for us, about the town, about the department, the police department, or if you want to give us any closing comments.
I would just like to thank you all very much for the opportunity, and I am very grateful for being here.
And we're grateful that you are here, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I believe we have now interviewed all the candidates, Chief, are there any closing comments you would like to make in this process? We are not voting this evening, we will be looking at our notes, and then preparing most likely next week to consider what we're going to be doing, but if you, any comments you or anyone else in the department wanted to share?
I just want to thank you all for your time, again, the long process these officers go through, or the candidates go through to become officers, and we appreciate the time that you spend on it, and you can see from a lot of the candidates tonight, that we, again, have an excellent pool as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief? Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, then we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is going to be public comment, and so I am looking around, I'm not sure we're going to get any, but if there's any member of the public who has, who would like to comment on items not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. And there are no comments, so we'll move on to Town Administrator Reports.
Not tonight, thank you.
Art?
Nothing to add this evening, thank you.
And Members of the Select Board? And members of the Select Board?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Bill?
Do you have one thing? And him and some of his teammates watching, so I told him I'd mention it. My second and third grade football team won the Super Bowl. So Hingham Raiders, yeah, they did win it. It was a Thursday. We didn't meet in between, so congratulations to these guys. They won despite their coaching. Look, this coached. Great, but they won it. And so they won, and I know they're watching, so congratulations to those guys.
Congratulations.
The sixth and the eighth graders won. And the sixth grade program and the eighth grade program also won too, so I want to recognize them as well, so.
Thank you.
Great season.
And Hingham High won. The things given.
Hingham High won, thank you. It was a great game.
So our next meeting, I believe, is going to be tomorrow evening. And it will be by Zoom, starting at 7:00.
Yes.
So with that, I'm prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.